Council meeting. May I call to order and start off with a roll call?
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
And Councilmember Elect Jimenez? You have a quorum.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have a small modification to the agenda we'd like to recommend. We'd like to recommend that you move a public forum down in the agenda to right after remarks by incoming mayor. And we're making this recommendation because we feel it would be appropriate to have public forum after the reorganization. So if Jessica could just allow, let people in the audience know if they want to speak under public forum, it'll probably be about a half hour.
Okay.
If that's the pleasure of the council.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you, City Manager Nizbit. So for the public, we will hold public forum after the city council reorganizes, which will be a little bit toward the end of the meeting before the second consent calendar item. So at this time, we do have acknowledgement of our outgoing council member, Mayor Eisen. And we have a few presentations for him tonight, and so we will start off with Congresswoman Spear.
Thank you so much, Jessica. I'm honored to join you tonight on this festive occasion on so many levels, but also to pay my respects and to honor Adam Eisen, our mayor, as he leaves the city council. And Adam, I have presented to the House of Representatives an extension of remarks into the congressional record, which we will provide you this within days. But it really spells out all the remarkable contributions that you have made on behalf of the community. And I'm just going to read a couple of sections. Speaker Adam was drawn to public service by three broad and ambitious goals. He wanted community members to be involved. He wanted to engage a younger constituency, and he wanted to have the most qualified staff work for the city. Shortly after Adam and his wife Catherine moved to Half Moon Bay from Connecticut, a tractor ran into a bridge that he used to bike to his mother's home. The damaged bridge was demolished and his path to his mom was gone. He attended multiple council meetings lobbying to fix the bridge. With his typical optimism, he later told the local newspaper, quote, "The bridge did get fixed. It just took a few years and it's fantastic," end quote. So Adam, as you bring to a close your optimism on the city council for the four years, I want to note the fact that you have worked with the Parks and Rec Commission master plan to set standards and guidelines. You renegotiated the city's contract with local horseback riding stable operators to keep the beach accessible for riding yet free of horse manure so that all visitors could enjoy them. You were also instrumental in banning single-use plastic and flavored tobacco to keep our environment and our children safer. You helped initiate Measure U, a valid initiative increasing the transient occupancy tax so that the city would have more revenues, and that particular measure passed by 70%. So as you conclude your four years where you have served the residents of Half Moon Bay, I know you're leaving the council, but I'm certain that your next chapter will be filled with adventure and with contributions that will benefit everyone on the coast side. It has been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman Spear. Next, we have Leslie Bulba, Crime Assembly Member, Berman's Office.
I thank you very much. I'm hoping everybody can hear me. Mayor Eisen, I just wanted to say that it was a, you know, it's been a pleasure watching you work on council. I know we had an opportunity to speak more during kind of the CZU fire and the aftermath of the fire. Unfortunately, Assembly Member Berman couldn't be here this evening, but I just want to thank you for, for, you know, working on the city council as a council member, as mayor. I know how hard this job is. I've watched a lot of people serve their, their communities over, over a number of years that I've been doing this job. And, and I just want to thank you because I know that it takes a tremendous amount of, of time, of dedication, of love for your community. So, so thank you so much for serving, and I, I know this is not the last we're going to see of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. And next, we have Supervisor Horstley.
Thanks. Well, first of all, a lot, a lot of the accomplishments that you made over the past four years in your service actually have been mentioned already by Jackie, Congresswoman Spear. So I'm not going to go over that, but I will say that the last year has been a really tough year for all of us because of this pandemic and the collapsing economy. And maybe people don't know this, but Adam and I talked a lot over this year. And every time, you know, we were talking about traffic and how we're going to protect the coast side. And Adam was a fearless and feisty advocate for the coast. And we, you know, maybe we didn't accomplish all the things that many of our constituents would have wanted in terms of, you know, limited number of people who, you know, came out to the coast side. Coast side is something that all of us love, and I think, you know, the whole Bay Area loves, unfortunately. They love it a little bit too much. But Adam was, as I said, is just a great advocate. We worked together really effectively, I think. Sometimes we were able to close speeches, sometimes we were not able to do that, but we always, you know, worked together. And I, you know, I just can't say enough for his leadership. The last time we were together and actually in person was the groundbreaking for the, what's going to be the southern entrance of the town of Half Moon Bay. And I know there's been, you know, some work that's going on in that area. And it's going to make a dramatic difference in people when they enter the south part of Half Moon Bay. That part of your legacy, part of the legacy of the city council. And I have to say that working for the whole, with the whole council for me has been really a pleasure. So I congratulate all of you. Look forward to working with Joaquin as well. And you've been a great steward for your city, Adam. And I really appreciate the work with you, and you are just a very fine person. So thanks and good luck in the future.
Thank you. Very kind.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstley. Next, we have Vice Mayor Brownstone to present a plaque on behalf of the city.
Well, Adam, I am honored to present you, unfortunately remotely, with this actually very, let's see if we can get all this in here. Well, trust me, it's a beautiful wooden plaque with a real wooden mallet attached to it. And, you know, I'm pretty sure if you want to play with this mallet later, just a couple of good yanks, you know, will do the trick. And it says on it, "Presented to Adam Eisen, Mayor 2020, in sincere appreciation of dedicated service." So this plaque is specifically for your service as mayor. And I think you and I could agree that it really was a hell of a year. Can't imagine a community having to pull together to face more challenges than this past year. And it's been alluded to already. But, you know, COVID, having stay-at-home sheltering orders, and then we had the unique situation with our beaches. And for those who are familiar with this phrase, Adam really stood in the fire. I mean, he literally stood in the fire. Public opinion was our face to the media. And it was rough. We had to coordinate a lot of different agencies, and sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't work. And, you know, all of a sudden, they removed the stay-at-home order and everyone wanted to come to the beach. When I say everyone, I mean everyone from most 50 miles around. So we've never had crowds like that, and this is in the middle of COVID. So people are already, you know, a little bit sensitive about lots of strangers, some wearing masks, some not wearing masks. We didn't have enough parking. So it was quite, it caused a lot of anxiety in the community. And I think you worked well. You, we went from an e-newsletter every week to a mayor's letter. And I think having a personal touch with a mayor's letter, one, I think more people are interested in reading it. It's just how humans are, psychology, you know, this is from the mayor. And you tell a few stories and, you know, a lot of the people I know in my neighborhood and community, they just really liked reading it. And all of a sudden, you weren't just Mayor Eisen. That's how you became like Mayor Adam also. Do you know what I mean? That's when it got that personal, and I liked that. I thought it made a big difference. And then if that wasn't enough, of course, then we had the fires. And again, you know, we kind of put those memories at arm's length, but those fires were scary. We were waking up in the mornings. There was ash all over our cars, and the air quality was like being close to Mount St. Helens for weeks on end. And all of a sudden, we became a, you know, one of the county's centers for handling, for helping folks who had to evacuate. We had an evacuation center here. And again, I thought you did a great job bringing in resources. I thought it was terrific when you talked with Cameron and had him help people who went RVs utilize some of his, his resources at an RV park. And for, you know, I think that's what really brings a community together. We're helping our neighbors, not having any idea where we might be the next day because that's how close the fires were getting. So again, I don't, I think, you know, you exercise great leadership during the most trying times any community can have, and we all thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And next, we have Councilwoman Reddick, who will present another plaque from the city. Debbie, you're muted.
Beautiful hunk of something, a glass-like substance. It's beautiful though, and it has some blue, and it has your name on it. The good thing is now maybe you can see me through. You won't be able to see me through it when you go home. So I just want to say, I've been on the council for 30 years. No, 20 or 18 years, but I've been active in the community for 30 years. And I can't remember ever a year like we, we've had, you know, in 2020. And I think we are measured in the end about how we acted and behaved, you know, in a moment of crisis, when we are challenged, not when we're on Easy Street, but when we are challenged. And I think you really stepped up this year and showed real metal. You continued reaching out to the public and, and listening. You tried, you weren't afraid to try some creative approaches. You reached out to Don and the Board of Supervisors and Jackie and, and Mark and Kevin. You pulled in as many resources as you could for our community to help, you know, address these extraordinary challenges. And you did so for the last few months without a lot of support from the council. And people need to understand that part of our, our code of conduct as a council is we accede to the mayor to be our spokesperson, right? He's the person who can, you know, shapes the agenda, brings his vision to bear. He's our spokesperson, and he did that job, I think beautifully, and did it honestly and transparently. So it was a great year, Adam, and you proved to be, I think, an extraordinary mayor in extraordinary terms. And we don't agree on every issue. We don't have to agree on every issue, but you brought all the qualities to bear that, that we need in leadership positions, I think. And you also brought the business perspective, which I think is, will remain very important for this, for the city. In fact, possibly more important, given the restrictions on our economy with COVID and the, the fact that, you know, our hospitality industry is challenged. I, I think it's an important perspective. You know, government is not a, it doesn't operate with the same purposes as a business, but we have to be smart with our money because they're actually other people's money. So I, I, we want to, you know, make sure that we bring this perspective to bear going forward. And I just want to say, you know, I'm grateful. Adam actually lives just a block or two away from me. We live in the neighborhood. We know the, the same people. I know you as a great family man. You have a large network of friends who support you. You have a really loving family. You will continue to be blessed and you will have new adventures. And happy to know you, happy to be your neighbor, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And I will drop this by your house.
Yeah, no rush.
Thanks, Debbie. Councilwoman Penrose, did you want to make comments or Councilmember Rarback?
Yes, I'd love to say something. It, it's difficult to follow all of those eloquent kudos to you, Adam. Everything that's been said has been true. And I really do appreciate the fact that this year, as difficult as it was, was one that you led our council through with grace and with fortitude. But also for the past four years of being on council with you. As, as Councilwoman Reddick said, we didn't always agree on every issue, but we discussed things, you listened, we listened to you, and we almost always came up with a consensus. We, we learned from each other. And your particular point of view was one that I really respected. It, it brought a new way of looking at things to me. So I want to thank you for your service. And I also want to remind folks that not only did you give of yourself all this year a full-time job to being mayor, but you're also a parent, a husband, a community member, and you work. So that's a lot to ask of any one person, and you, you did a stellar job. I, I want to thank you, and I look forward to the very next phase in your life. It'll be interesting to see what goes on. Thank you.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you.
Adam, you really picked a bad year to be mayor. You had an incredible list of things that you had to deal with, which were novel and pretty distressing in many respects. I think COVID, the CZU fires, the, the business community being hit so hard. And you really worked very hard in handling all these unexpected events. So I'm grateful for your leadership, and we'll miss you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. It does appear that we have two members of the public who wish to provide acknowledgements to Adam as well. So we'll start with Wayne Lee. Wayne, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to acknowledge your, your critical work you've done this year, Mayor Eisen. And also want to just acknowledge the fact that you were also very instrumental in helping the, the, the issue with the assaults against Asians. I am, I am the president of the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Honor Caucus and former council member from the city of Millbrae. And I just want to acknowledge the fact that you, you took the courage to stand up there to, to really support safety, diversity, inequality. So I think that not only the, all the things that, that, all the things that people said, your fellow council members were a good indication of the character of who you are, but also you reached beyond the borders of, of Half Moon Bay and really showed that you're a big, a large humanitarian. So thank you very much for your service to Half Moon Bay. Thank you for your service to the county of San Mateo. And also, on other note, I just wanted to say that I also want to thank you for the opportunity to represent you, the city of Half Moon Bay, on the associate beer governments. It's been an honor to work with you on housing, work on the clean energy, and the Pitisah Clean Energy. Half Moon Bay's been right up there with many of the county initiatives. And I think that that's the one thing about people say about our county, and they wish that we worked as well as, they wish to work as well as we do in our county. We have great leadership in the congressman, Congresswoman Spear, and Don Horstley, Supervisor of Don Horstley. And so I just want to, again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you. I look forward to working with Council-elect Jimenez, and hopefully we'll see you again soon around town. And by the way, I do shop in Half Moon Bay, and I hope you do shop in Millbrae as well, so.
All right.
So much, and happy holidays.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Wayne. John Olin?
Thank you for letting me speak. Mayor Eisen, you know how I feel about the work you've done for our city over the last four years. I personally am proud to have been associated with you and to have chewed you out when I thought you were wrong and encouraged you when I thought you were right. And you were a good man, no matter what I was saying. We need more people like you. I believe that one point has not been made that needs to be made. Mayor Eisen is by far, in San Mateo County, the sharpest dressed politician out there. It looks better doing it than anybody else in this county. Thank you, Adam. I really appreciate what you've done for us.
Thank you. First time I've heard that.
Thanks, John. Brent Turner?
Good evening, Jessica, Congresswoman Spear, City Council staff, Sheriff and Supervisor Horstley. Wanted to say thank you on behalf of the activist community to Mayor Eisen. Obviously, he was right in the midst of a very difficult situation. And those of us that saw the realities of that situation are appreciative of his great leadership. He was under that great pressure to underplay the COVID pandemic and stood up bravely, we think, to close down the beaches 4th of July, along with the mayor of Pacifica. We think that saved a lot of lives and in retrospect was quite commendable and an act of bravery. So we're going to miss Adam, and Adam, thanks for your service.
Thank you, Brent. Mayor Eisen, the floor is yours.
All right. First of all, it's funny to hear all these people that were all over me for so many years actually saying nice things about me. But I appreciate it tremendously, and I really do appreciate the community involvement in Half Moon Bay. I think it's, I think it's great that people are involved, and each person that's communicated with me throughout my time as mayor has just been, you know, an eye-opening experience. And, and I thank council, just really starting out. I think Deborah Penrose hit it perfectly. You know, what I really appreciated about this council is we do not think in lockstep, and nor do I think the town wants a council that thinks in lockstep. We need to have divergent opinions, divergent views, and different, different ways that we're thinking about what's going on in the city and bringing that to the table, but yet open-minded enough to come to common ground. And when we are, you know, presenting to actually have a united front, generally speaking, because we've worked all the different perspectives out, and we know that we need to come to some sort of consensus. I think this council was great at that, and I appreciate the time that we spent together. So let me get into my little speech. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Half Moon Bay over the past four years. This is my last speech of mayor, as mayor, for the 2020 year. What a ride it's been, as many people alluded to. I ask that you kindly sit back and relax for a few minutes while I take, take you down memory lane. Before I start my speech, I want to thank one very important person, my mom, Paulette Eisen. She was my campaign manager, my biggest critic, a contrarian point of view, and someone I respect very much. During my four years on council, she attended every city council meeting and read thousands of pages of material. There were people who accused me of listening to her too much or thinking that her point of view was my point of view. People accuse you of many things when you're a political figure. To me, a mother must be listened to, respected, and loved, even if you don't always agree. I think the world of my mom and appreciate everything she has done to move Half Moon Bay forward. I feel that Half Moon Bay owes a debt of gratitude to the four years of service you put in. Thank you, Mom. In July 2016, I was approached by members of the Half Moon Bay community asking me to run for city council to ensure that young families had a voice in local politics. I decided to run because I love Half Moon Bay. We have a saying in my younger family community that we yell out from time to time. I'll kind of do the yell, "I love this place!" For those of you that are actually listening and know what that means. I love the natural, small beach town we call home. I love that everywhere I go, I know half the people. I love the feeling of the community. I love the feeling of the community of living in Half Moon Bay. And I've set forth to bring that energy to every person I meet in Half Moon Bay, to continue to build on the community we have here. My goal in running for election in 2016 was to enhance and protect what Half Moon Bay is. I ran my campaign on protecting our coastside environment, keeping our open space open, fiscal responsibility, including conservative expenditure, and adding new revenue streams. And finally, taking care of our infrastructure with a focus on safety, access, and aesthetics. I've been happy to see progress on all fronts during my tenure. We completed the local coastal plan in 2020, which is a great, big testament to council and city staff as well. I'm so impressed with the work that's been done on that, setting in motion the preservation of Half Moon Bay for the next 20 to 30 years to come. We made difficult cuts to our city's finances when the pandemic hit, ensuring fiscal solvency through the next few years. We also have increased collection of transient occupancy tax on short-term rentals and added a measure to increase overall transient occupancy tax on the 2020 ballot, which you all voted for and was talked about earlier and passed. We completed our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, which I am hopeful this council will continue to prioritize the projects which were set forth. In particular, Carter Park, which is a project I was and continue to be very excited about. I'm also an avid biker, and so I look forward to the projects that came forth from the, from the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Fast forward to 2020, I was voted in as mayor. It started out innocently. We had a solid budget. We set priorities for the 2020 year, and we had projects we wanted to see come to fruition. I knew I had a lot to learn, but I was up for the challenge. Little did I know what was about to happen. The pandemic quickly hit, and the mayoral, mayoral duties changed rapidly. Ribbon-cutting ceremonies morphed into serious leadership challenges. Fear and lack of knowledge was quickly bubbling up in our community. I knew Half Moon Bay needed a mayor who could step up and lead. And that is exactly what I did. I started by initiating a weekly mayoral letter to keep everyone informed, connected, and reassured. I received many heartwarming responses to these letters, to which I am very grateful. Next was our budget. Having someone on council, council who understands finances is a big advantage. Having someone on council who understands finances and transient occupancy tax is a goldmine. I was that person. Knowing that Half Moon Bay is one of the top 10 cities in the state of California with reliance on the transient occupancy tax, and knowing what I know about the hospitality industry, I set forth on mission to reduce our city expenditures. No one likes to cut budgets, including me. But I believed it was the right thing to do and made sure we did what was needed to help keep Half Moon Bay solvent for years to come. Next came the closing of our beaches. Some weekends worked well, as was talked about, others were less successful. We discovered one of the problems of having many jurisdictions overseeing a small area. It is my hope that council works to fix this in years to come. We absolutely need a solution to this problem because it, there are times where this will happen again, and we need a solution. We know there is a problem now. Soon after the beaches came the fires to the north and south of us, then evacuations and struggling businesses and renters and homeowners who had lost their jobs. At that point, myself included, I also lost my job this year. Seventeen years with a company, Marriott. Next, Black Lives Matter movement quickly followed. Then the school year came, and I found myself working and teaching two children from home, though still being schooled through the Spanish immersion programs at our public schools at Hatch and Cunha. Through it all, I learned the resilience, dedication, and compassion of our own townspeople. When COVID hit, our community took the necessary sacrifices to stay at home and keep their neighbors safe. After the murder of George Floyd, many stood at the jetty in solidarity to signify support for the Black Lives Matter movement. When the wildfires raged and our neighboring communities were evacuated, our towns opened up their houses, hearts, and chicken coops to help. Some even filled their trucks with supplies and brought food, water, and wares to people in need. Teachers and parents have risen to the challenge of schooling remotely in very difficult conditions. I am so proud of this community, and I am so proud to be a part of this community. It has been a truly humbling year. Overall, I come away from this experience hoping that I made more good decisions than bad ones. I hope you felt leadership I brought during unprecedented times. I hope you watched as I grew into my role as a leader of this town. I gave it my all. I brought a young energy and enthusiasm to council that is desperately needed. I am sad to see council moving forward without that voice any longer. But I am excited for the next chapter of Half Moon Bay's future. Half Moon Bay has elected someone who represents another constituency that has been underrepresented. I wish Joaquin the best on his journey. Good luck, Joaquin. Here are my asks to our newly configured council. Just like in true Adam Eisen's general style, I'm not going out unless I leave a list of things that still need to be done. So here we go. Please keep a close eye on our city finances. As you know, the pandemic still rages on, and the hospitality industry is still hit hard. And since our finances are drawn so much through that industry, we want to make sure that we keep our solvency for many years to come. So please keep an eye on our city finances. Please, that's in one. Two, please prioritize the finishing of Carter Park. It was the number one identified project from our Parks and Rec Master Plan. And I had hoped to finish it in my year as mayor, but obviously with the funding and everything the way it was, we had to completely abandon that project for the time being. I'm hoping that you will bring it back at some point and finish that park because it will change the way Half Moon Bay interacts in its own town with our community and will hopefully bring more community ability for us to get together when, when the time comes. Please prioritize the redoing of the pathway from Railroad Avenue to Poplar Beach. It is in total disrepair. People get hurt. It's something that needs to be fixed more quickly than not. Please fix bridges and infrastructure before they are broken. In the ideal, we will come to our projects before they are broken and they put us on, on a waiting list. Please help revitalize businesses in Half Moon Bay. And then my last ask here is to help me create a Half Moon Bay First Night for New Year's as we transition from the 2021, so not this upcoming one, 2021 to 2022 and beyond. First Night is something that brings the community together. It's a great way to celebrate New Year's. It's something I had wanted to spearhead for a long time now, but so many things going on, haven't really gotten to it. Now it's a project I think I can take on. I would like to acknowledge and thank some folks who have supported me all along. Let me start off with Councilwoman Ruddock. Councilwoman Ruddock, as she mentioned, lives very close to me. But really, her, her experience on council and knowing the ins and outs of how council works, how government works. She's been working for government agencies for most of her life, if not all of it. And I don't know the exact track record, so please bear with me. But Councilwoman Ruddock took me under her wing at times when I needed information, support, understanding of who to call, ideas, processes. I, I, I think she is an absolute asset to our city council. And I am so thankful for the time she took to help develop me and bring me in on council and teach me the, the things that I needed to learn. So thank you so much for spending that time with me. I am extremely grateful. I want to thank Bob Nesbit. We, we hired Bob two years ago, he reminded me just the other day. And Bob has done a fantastic job working with me throughout the years. We have a weekly call. There was a time period where Bob and I, we were talking probably a couple of times every day. It was exhausting for both of us, and we both drove each other crazy. And through the process, though, we helped move the city forward. And I'm just very appreciative of not only what Bob's done, but what he's done to hire such a competent and excellent staff underneath him and supporting the city. I feel like the town should rest assured that we are in great hands with our city staff. And most of that is a testament to what Bob's done to make sure that we are, we're well-staffed and that the people that are here enjoy their jobs and know what their jobs are and what their, what their responsibilities are. So thank you so much, Bob. Senator Jerry Hill, he was always there to lend an opinion or advice. Let me speak directly to Don Horsley. Don, I, I am so appreciative. The relationship we established, you know, at first, you feel like this little council member, and you don't really know how to find your way, or at least I didn't. It took me a little while. And talking to you every time, you were open. You, you, you helped lead me in certain directions. You talked to me about the ways things should be done. You focused me on projects that you thought were unnecessary for Half Moon Bay. And you just, you lent an opinion that, again, I had never received before. And when, especially when we were dealing with the beaches and with beach cleanup in particular. And then we were talking about the trees. And I, I just, I'm, I'm so appreciative. I think the coast side should be very appreciative that you're there. And I am very appreciative. And, you know, it's, it's interesting, we received for probably a good portion of the year some of the same emails. And, and, and your response to them, you know, taught me a lot. And I, it, it was just great to see how to work with the public, how to answer questions in a professional way that gave people information that they needed. And then also to make sure that you were communicating, you know, when the bridge went out, the county bridge, how quickly you guys made a fantastic divide and a safety net for our, all the bikers to be able to continue to use the detour. And I'm just appreciative for everything you've done. So thank you so much. And I, I, I appreciate the relationship as well. Thank you. To Congresswoman Jackie Spear, I think you are one of the finest people I've ever worked with. So many different aspects of what you bring. My, you had two comments in particular that stand out to me. The first one, and I hope, I hope it's okay that I say it, but we had just gone into lockdown in Half Moon Bay. It was the first weekend. And even myself, we had read the, the, the stay-at-home order to be, eh, as long as you're outside, kind of like being, you know, outside with your dogs or taking a walk or whatever it was, that it was allowed. And that first weekend, there were so many people that came to Half Moon Bay. It was off the chart. And just for the record, myself, we went about 20 miles away and went on a hike. So technically, that probably wasn't even allowed either. But everybody was learning how to do it. And I got on the all-county call, as we did the weekly county call. And you said, well, I was in Half Moon Bay myself that weekend, walking my dog. I said, that is a count, that's somebody I can appreciate. So you and I helped then figure out how to set up the five-mile radius from home aspect of what to do for the stay-at-home, the shelter-in-place. And that ended up being, I think, an unbelievably great way for a county to go about this process. And as I saw other counties struggling, you know, many people contacted me and wondered how we figured that out and got it into our, into our state shelter-in-place order. And I said, well, Jackie Spear was definitely helping back that when we brought it up. So I appreciate both of those aspects. And, and you come to Half Moon Bay often, as well as Don Horsley, as well as Senator Hill. And we're very grateful for everything that you do. So thank you. Just a couple others. Cameron Palmer, who is our town patriarch, I'm, I'm extremely appreciative. I've always looked at him as kind of like the mayor of Half Moon Bay anyways. He puts on so many good events for the town and keeps the town moving in a positive direction and builds great community here in Half Moon Bay. And former council members. I'm, I'm extremely appreciative, and I hope the current council members use their former council members as well. But every former council member for the past, you know, eight to 10 years took time meeting with me, giving me insights, and then would email me at times their opinions on different things and different ways to look at different perspectives. So I'm very appreciative for, for the time they spent. They lent me their ears and opinions, and I want to say thank you. To my team, Brian Holt was an absolutely fantastic commissioner for our, our planning commission. And, you know, he helped with the local coastal plan and so many other pieces. He brought a young energy there, which I think was great. And Amy Ahouse was my Parks and Rec Commissioner. And again, brought a young energy to the Parks and Rec Commission, which I, which I thought was great and needed. And then, of course, I have my, my treasurer, Walter Sensing. I appreciate everything you did. Those were some tough things that you managed with all the finances. I'm very extremely appreciative. And lastly, to my family, they've been extremely supportive. They have loved me. They've been behind me the entire time. And I'm very appreciative to have such a loving and great family as I've, as I've walked these waters. And they've had to listen to me vent about different emails I've received and council members and different pieces of legislation that's been going on. And they've been here to help brainstorm with me and support me through the process. And, and so I, I just want to say to everybody that's been a part of everything, thank you. And, and thank you for allowing me to be part of your community and lead your community during an unprecedented time. And with that, I'll, I'll say congratulations to the new council. And please move forward with grace and, and beautiful energy. And I know you will, and I'm excited for the next chapter of Half Moon Bay's history. So thank you. And with that, maybe we move on to the consent calendar? Yeah? Councilwoman Ruddock?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Item 1A, Wade Reading Resolutions and Ordinances. Item 1B, final results of the November 3, 2020 general election. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent.
So thank you, Mayor Eisen. Next were your remarks, but those did seem to fit better before the consent calendar. So at this point, we will move on to oaths of office to our newly elected council members. And I did just want to briefly say that I've conducted around 15 elections in my career. This has by far been the most challenging and the most strange, culminating with this remote reorganization tonight. So thank you to the candidates and the council and the community for your patience and as we navigated through this. And so Joaquin, is Belinda there with you to administer your oath of office?
Yes, she's here with, with me.
Okay, so we'll start with Belinda Ariaga. Will administer the oath of office in Spanish to Joaquin Jimenez.
Good evening, everyone. It's truly an honor to be here tonight on this momentous occasion to be able to partake in this event. The very first moment that we will have a Latino immigrant here in the city of Half Moon Bay for city council. It's truly an honor to be here with Joaquin. And I have the oath of office in Spanish, and I understand someone will be doing it in English. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. As just a point of reference, is it available for me to say a few words right now? Um, as just a point of reference, is it, um, available for me to say a few words right now or after the oath for Joaquin's family in Mexico and all those watching in Spanish?
Uh, you could do that now.
Okay, great. Um, I will be saying these words in Spanish and then I'll say a few words in English. Quiero decir a todos que están viendo este momento. Aquí estamos presentes con Joaquin Jimenez. Es un gran honor. Está presente aquí unidos desde México aquí hasta Half Moon Bay. Todos sabemos que la historia comenzó de Joaquin desde su tierra de México y los raíces de su familia que están mirando hoy noche. Quiero felicitar a todos ustedes que están en unión con nosotros desde México hasta aquí porque sentimos su presencia. Honestamente, ustedes y su familia de Joaquin que está aquí en este momento. Toda la familia de Joaquin están juntos con ustedes. Y es un gran orgullo. Es un honor de presentarlos hoy noche a Joaquin que va a ser el concejal de Half Moon Bay. Este ha sido un sueño. Un sueño que Joaquin tuvo por mucho tiempo, pero también un sueño de muchos de nosotros, de su familia y de nuestro pueblo. Y quiero dar gracias a todos que hicieron esta oportunidad posible. Todos que apoyaron a Joaquin, todos que votaron por Joaquin, todos que estaban detrás de él empujando cada día que sí se puede. Porque no ha sido un camino fácil. Desde niñez hasta ahorita, él siempre ha sido luchador. Y este momento, este título, esta posición que él va a cargar en nuestra comunidad es para voz de la gente. Es para la voz de toda la comunidad. Porque ese es uno de los temas que Joaquin siempre ha dicho, que es para todos. Está aquí para representar a todos. Pero en eso también voy a decir que él está representando todos que nunca han tenido un voz. Todos que han vivido en silencio, todos que han vivido escondidos, los campesinos, los mamás y papás que lograron venir aquí por una mejor vida dejando todo su familia para atrás en México con un sueño. Un sueño que algo se iba a poder hacer para impactar toda la familia. Y Joaquin, su historia, historia de su mamá y su papá, de su esposa, sus hijos. Esos momentos, esos sueños se represente aquí con Joaquin y aquí en este momento de este honor que él va a tomar de representar, de tener una asiento en la mesa del Consilio de Half Moon Bay. Quiero, quiero decir gracias a Dios. Gracias a Dios y el fe que Joaquin tiene y su familia para estar aquí hoy momento. Gracias al City Council, todos los miembros que están aquí hoy noche. Y hoy es su nuevo día. Comenzamos con humildad. Yo sé que Joaquin está comenzando con humildad, con orgullo, con alegría y con una confianza que él va a ser el mejor trabajo posible. So, hoy noche voy a comenzar de, um, jurar a Joaquin Jimenez. And now, thank you everyone. I'm ready to, um, do the oath of, the swearing in. And I will say it in Spanish. And my understanding is that then it will be said in, um, English by Congresswoman Jackie Spear. Thank you so much, Representative Spear, for being here with us on this momentous occasion. Any instructions?
Just do it. Yeah, Belinda, just go ahead and go through the oath. That's fine. Thank you.
Hold up a ten, right?
Correct.
Yo, Joaquin Jimenez.
Yo, Joaquin Jimenez.
Juro.
Juro.
Que apoyaré.
Que apoyaré.
Y defenderé.
Y defenderé.
La Constitución de los Estados Unidos.
La Constitución de los Estados Unidos.
Y la Constitución del Estado de California.
Y la Constitución del Estado de California.
Contra todos los enemigos.
Contra todos los enemigos.
Extranjeros.
Extranjeros.
Y domésticos.
Y domésticos.
Que mantendré.
Que mantendré.
Verdadera fe.
Verdadera fe.
Y la realidad.
Y la realidad.
A la Constitución.
A la Constitución.
De los Estados Unidos.
De los Estados Unidos.
Y la Constitución.
Y la Constitución.
Del Estado de California.
Del Estado de California.
Que asumo esta obligación.
Que asumo esta obligación.
Libremente.
Libremente.
Sin ninguna reserva.
Sin ninguna reserva.
Mental.
Mental.
O propósito.
O propósito.
De habitación.
De habitación.
Y que cumpliré.
Y que cumpliré.
Bien.
Bien.
Y fielmente.
Y fielmente.
Los deberes.
Los deberes.
En los que estoy.
En los que estoy.
A punto.
A punto.
De entrar.
De entrar.
Thank you, Belinda. Now, Congresswoman Spear will administer the oath in English to both Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Rabeck.
Uh, please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I.
I, Jimenez.
Rabeck.
Do somme swear.
Do somme swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which.
Congratulations, Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Rabeck.
Thank you, God.
Thank you, Congresswoman Spear. At this time, Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Rabeck, if you'd like to make any comments?
I would. Um, we've heard a lot tonight about, uh, emergencies and, uh, beach closures. I am so proud of another aspect of both our council and, uh, the city staff. And that is how we have served the underserved. Uh, you know, a community is best known by how it treats its least among us. And I think we have done extremely well as a council and as a city. And I just wanted to emphasize some of the things that we've done in this recent past that have helped, uh, people who need help most. We have given money to the Workface Workplace Development Center that has helped a lot of, uh, uh, unhoused people. It's also helped clean the beaches and the streets. So, it's a win-win. And the council has been proactive in actually getting that done. We have given rental assistance to help people in the time of COVID. Uh, that is extremely important. It's going to prevent some evictions. So, I'm proud of the way that the council and the city have worked together on that. Uh, we have advocated for a $15 minimum wage, uh, against some opposition. And I think that's going to help, uh, a lot of people. And I'm proud of the council for working on that. We have developed affordable housing guidelines. Uh, and I'm looking forward to actually building some more affordable housing. I think Joaquin is also involved in that. So, I think that is something that will help a lot of underserved people. We have advocated for the transitional housing, uh, that has just recently been, uh, approved by the county. And again, that's something that will help many people who need help. And I'm very proud that, to be part of the effort of the community, the council and the city staff that have worked hard to approve that and get that going. I've been involved in trying to get some tradition, uh, transitional housing for years now. So, the fact that we can get this going by December 30th is, uh, very important to me. And lastly, uh, we, it's, um, important, I think, to have a more diverse city council. Uh, and with the election of Joaquin, I think we're well on our way. So, all of these things have given me a great deal of confidence that the council, the city staff are working hard for the community, all aspects of the community. So, thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, and before, uh, Councilmember Jimenez goes, uh, it's my understanding that Congresswoman Spear has another obligation and she must get going. And so, uh, obviously, we would love to have her back sometime in 2021 if she would, uh, do that honor. Uh, but I'll leave it to her if she has a few minutes or if she has to go at this time.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, you know, I, I really do have to go. I can wait maybe another couple of minutes, but I don't want to in any way, um, you know, prevent the festivities from going on and for our new council member to speak. So, um, I will, you know, certainly leave it in your hands. Um, and I will be happy to come back.
Thank you, Congresswoman Spear. Uh, Councilmember Jimenez, did you have any comments?
Yes, I do. First of all, I would like to, uh, thank everybody, uh, being a person of faith. First, I would like to, uh, thank Dios y la Virgen de Guadalupe, uh, for the opportunity to be here. I want to thank the, the campaign team, that we had a, a great team. I want to thank, you know, Phil, Belinda, Tony, Lauren, Elise, Cecilia, Kike, Alice, everybody in the team who, uh, supported that campaign. I also want to, uh, thank the, the advisory group, that we had a very strong advisory group. I am looking forward to serving the community like I have to this point. Being able to give a voice to a community that have been, that has not been heard is an honor. It is an honor to be the first Latino Mexican immigrant to be elected to the Half Moon Bay City Council. Primer concejal municipal. We have a lot of things on our platform, things we would like to accomplish. One of the things that, uh, that I'm known by is to be able to build relationships with, uh, with community, uh, with different groups, different organizations. And that's what I'm looking forward to, working, collaborating. Being part of the, the city of Half Moon Bay is giving me the opportunity to bring equity to our city. Giving the opportunity to give a voice, giving the opportunity to share my culture. I want to say that what we have to offer to this community is an opportunity to grow, to be a diverse community, to continue to move forward, to bring new ideas and to get things done. Right now, working with organizations like Alice, you know, community has given us the opportunity to share some of the things that we are doing for the people in need. It is the opportunity that I speak about is to, uh, be able to find the equity that we need to find equality in our community. Looking forward to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, Congressman Spear, did you want to say anything before you had to leave?
Yes, I, actually, I, um, I'm honored to be asked to participate tonight and to say a few words. Let me just say to, uh, Vice Mayor Brownstone, to council members Rodeck, Penrose, Rabeck and Jimenez, um, what a, what a pleasure it is to be with you tonight. Um, and I, I will say to Adam Eisen, the outgoing mayor, uh, you are a great leader, Adam. And you, your energy is palpable. Your commitment to Half Moon Bay is truly something that we should all bottle. And, um, I know that you're not going to go very far away. And just for the record, I've lost three elections. So, um, there's always, uh, a path back. And I hope that you take full advantage of it and stay very active in the community. Uh, let me just say a few words because I know there's a much celebrating that wants to be participated in by all of you. You know, I have lived in this grand county for all of my life and with the exception of two years. And when I think of Half Moon Bay, um, I think of heart. Half Moon Bay has always had heart, has always had heart, and it will always have heart. Uh, it is a community that when you drive into it, you feel like you are being embraced, whether you are a nearby resident or someone who is a tourist coming into the community for the first time. So, my message tonight is, um, keep that heart pumping. We have reason to be very hopeful. But not only did we have the Electoral College Act yesterday to elect President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris, uh, and that is now behind us. We also have to celebrate the fact that we now have a vaccine. And now we've got to communicate it to all of our constituents, how important it is to take it so that we can gain her immunity and move forward. So, it is a time to be hopeful and optimistic. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." And this community and this county have shown over and over how successful we can be. And through this pandemic and through these fires and through the, the, uh, great movement of Black Lives Matter, uh, we have, um, we have shown that we are a, a community that can respond effectively, whether it's setting up field hospitals or testing sites or providing additional monies to small businesses as Sematol County has done. Um, the county has been very generous and my hats off to Don Horsley as the county supervisor for the district for, for going extra mile over and over again. So, whether it was buying hotels or providing hotels to the homeless or feeding people, uh, thousands and thousands of meals, uh, we've been there and we've done it. I think with, um, Joaquin's ascension to the city council, uh, Half Moon Bay has recognized that we're 30% of the population and Half Moon Bay is Hispanic, that representation was absolutely imperative. So we're on the right track. It's a time to be optimistic and hopeful, and really, the best is yet to come. So congratulations again to all of you, and Godspeed during this wonderful season. Good night.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Jackie.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Congresswoman Spear, for joining us tonight and for your remarks. At this point, I will turn it over to the council for a nomination for mayor for 2021.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Robert Brownstone as mayor of Half Moon Bay for 2021.
Back in.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations, or would you like a vote?
Vote.
Okay. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone? Motion carries unanimously. Mayor Brownstone, take it away.
Yes. What we'll do next is, and I'll start off, is nominations for deputy mayor, and I'll start by, I would like to nominate Debbie Rodeck.
Back in.
Thank you. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodeck?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. We are hereby reorganized, I believe.
Yay, Robert!
Well, next on our agenda is for some remarks by the incoming mayor, which would be me. And I'm going to keep these pretty short. First, just a little bit about, someone gave me some good recommendations just to talk a little bit about my values and vision. And my values, sometimes when I look at my, making a list of values, I see what other people have done. When I've worked in various organizations, and we do these word clouds, and everybody gives input on, you know, what they think of folks. And I feel that it's one of my most important values in myself and others is kindness, is being kind, and listening with both heart and mind, and to empathize. And when I use the word empathy, it's being able, strong value in a community to be able to see the eyes, see the world through each other's eyes. Sometimes we just have to take a breath, especially when we're going through crises and strife, to take that moment, and that's how you build consensus and community, when there's conflict raging around us, to find out what that other person needs, how they see the world. And when you take that moment to ask how they see the world, that's where you build connection, and that's where you build consensus. That's the ideal moment. In terms of leadership, I think, you know, good leaders, they take more of the blame when things go sideways. And I tend to do that instead of blaming others. I feel like it's important as a leader to take more blame than blaming others. And it's important as a leader to listen with a willingness to be influenced. And by that, I mean when you invite people for their opinion, don't come to that conversation having already made up one's mind. So, you know, lead with an open mind. And I think in terms of some of the quotes that Jackie made and others, to really focus on what's possible when we work together. It's always, sometimes we get caught up in talking about what's not possible and what's impossible. But I think when we work together, it is amazing what we can get done in this community. I think over the last year has really shown that determination to work together and see what's possible. So in terms of vision, vision for the coming year, well, it's interesting. A lot of things that we had to put off from last year because of COVID are going to naturally carry over. There's a lot of projects we postponed, and there's things that hopefully as we enter the next stage of this pandemic, we'll be able to take a look back and see what the things we want to work on. In terms of economic development, which has always been a key strategy of ours, we first have to now go through an economic recovery. And, you know, there's no clear roadmap after going through what we've gone through. Businesses, people have been devastated. You read about it every day. It's closing businesses in Half Moon Bay, closing businesses all around the country, people losing their homes, people losing livelihoods they've built for years. So I think it's going to involve a lot of compassion and really working together. And we're lucky. We've already seen that in our community. We've seen landlords, and I'm talking about both commercial landlords and residential landlords, really work hard, you know, with their tenants to help them get through this and forgive certain amounts of rent, not rush to evict people, even act of legislation to assist that. But I feel like a lot of that was done without even legislation, that this community really has stepped up in many ways, and that's the beauty of a small community. People know each other, and so they feel, you know, it's like neighbors and family. They all want to see each other survive. We don't want to see businesses boarded up on Main Street. That doesn't benefit, you know, any of the community. So I think we will focus on recovery first and development. And when we talk about recovery, of course, it's not both, it's both a financial and a health. Our top priority is getting through COVID, and we now have a vaccine. So I think a lot of our energy is going to be figuring out how to get this vaccine to everybody. And it's going to come in phases, and essential workers first. And there's going to be some dialogue, frankly, also about what does the essential worker mean? There's a lot of groups of essential workers. And it's not just about the work being really important for the economy, but it's also who is in most need of help. Because some folks can work remotely, some folks can't. Some folks can quarantine themselves when they test positive, others cannot. And when you look at the numbers in our county and the numbers of COVID-positive numbers, it's like at least five to 10s higher in the Latinx community. So when I'm looking at essential workers and we're trying to figure out, you know, where and who we need to get tested, I think there's a few factors that we're going to have to take into consideration. So my vision is having that dialogue and coming to an agreement with many different constituencies about what makes the most sense, and making sure we're using that same criteria to figure that out. And, you know, then there's all the other things that we don't want to repeat, you know, in the next year. We had a lot of crazy issues with traffic, beach openings and closures, and emergencies. So we're going to put a lot of work into our emergency operation plans, you know? What do we do if there's another fire? What if we do if other catastrophes hit? What are our secondary plans? How do we integrate cert groups into our emergency planning? You know, when people have a plan, they feel a lot safer. And, you know, not to tell too many stories, but there's an interesting situation when the fires were getting real close, and people said, "Where do we go? If things just start exploding around us and fires?" And there was an individual on Nextdoor who said, "Hey, here's what you do. Here's where to go. Remember, we have a whole beach here. You could go to the beach." And this individual has really put a calming effect on lots of people in the community. And one elderly gentleman said, "I have no idea how to get from my house to the beach." And right on Nextdoor, this person said, "Let me draw you a map. Tell me where you live." Did this all publicly. So that was incredible, when you see people come forth helping each other, worried about as much as other people's homes, and taking care of them and opening up their doors. So I think if we, my vision is that we proceed with that energy. We're going to implement a local coastal plan. Before we ever really got our coastal plan finished, we did a lot of outreach, and we asked people, "What's your vision? What's your vision for the community?" And there's really a lot of common denominators for, you know, keeping the character of small-town community. You know, we're okay with some smart growth, but we love the character. We love the open beaches. We love our open land districts. So it's my vision to continue with what most of this town agrees with. So when you have a strategy, it's really important to have measures and goals. So my vision is to really open up that process to the public. I like to educate the public. I like to think that, you know, if we have a strategy and we have milestones, we set up a dashboard where everyone could check in when they need to and see where we are on that dashboard. So you know, I like the words of Stephen Covey. It's amazing how much you can get done when you don't worry about getting the credit. And that's how I also feel is one of my leadership values. I know I get a lot more done when I'm not worried about getting the credit. And we have a great staff. We have a great council. There's a lot of shared efforts and shared credit to go around. So those are my values. That's my vision. Thank you for hearing me. Okay. So what is next here?
Mayor Brownstone, did you want to jump in a public forum now?
Yeah, let's see. We only, we can jump into the public forum.
Forum. We did move public forum to this slot.
Right. And I'm looking to see, so far I only see two hands raised.
Attendees, if there are any items that are not on the agenda tonight that you would like to speak to or any consent calendar items, now would be the time. Thank you.
Okay. Should we let her rip?
Mr. Mayor, actually, before we start, it's possible, I can see we have a few hands raised.
Maybe do the update.
And we'll see what kind of comments we get, but I think it would be appropriate, before we hear from some of those folks, possibly we'll hit some questions proactively. I would recommend we have a short update on the hotel acquisition. That's been the hottest topic here as we finish out the year. So I would ask Deputy City Manager Chittister, just to give a short presentation, anticipating we might get some comments from the public on that.
Terrific.
It's moving very fast as we approach the end of the year.
That's true. Thanks, Matthew.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, glad to be with you tonight on this historic night and exciting, exciting times. I'll try to make this brief, but I think this is really important for the community to hear. As Bob said, things are moving very quickly. As you know, last Tuesday, the County Board of Supervisors voted to move forward with the acquisition of the Coastside Inn to be used to provide shelter and support for homeless residents during COVID and beyond. So a couple of important things that are happening right now, I think the first one is an MOU between the city and the county that will help establish, you know, our expectations, our aspirations, and the way we will work together. We are actively preparing a draft MOU. The city is taking the lead on this effort, and we'll be providing that to the county shortly. And we expect to be able to finalize that in the new year. We will bring that back to you, council, for review and discussion and ultimate approval before it's finalized and signed. So either in January or February, you'll see that. And again, I think it'll help the community to see the collaborative effort that's going on between the city and the county and the aspirational goals that we've all set towards making this a successful endeavor. The second important thing that's happening, as people heard and had requested during the process of discussing this potential project, is the formation and utilization of a community advisory committee of some kind to allow members of our community, along with city staff and county staff, to, you know, look at the operational plans for the use of this facility and make sure that we mitigate impacts that it could have on the community, that we're thinking about the safety and health of the community and the safety and health of participants in the program and ultimately those that are going to live in this facility. So there's been a few discussions about that. We're going to have our first kickoff meeting at the staff level on Monday of next week. And at that meeting, we expect that we'll develop a plan for this committee, some criteria for membership and participation. We expect there will be some sort of application process. We've already heard from a lot of interested residents, and, you know, we'll determine how many people should participate in the makeup of that group. And again, I think very quickly in January, we'll be moving that forward and seeking participation so that we can convene that group and start getting community feedback. So those are two really, really important steps, I think, in this process, especially in helping the community to have a role and a voice, and the city to be able to participate in the planning and execution of this project. The other really big news, and the county manager alluded to this last Tuesday, is the county is planning to do a pilot project very quickly to get some individuals into the hotel and begin to operate on a very small scale, which will help in the operations planning for the long-term use of the facility and get some people in a better situation. And so I just wanted to provide a few details as we understand them right now, and the discussions are ongoing, and we're a participant in those discussions. So the plan is to kick off this pilot in the next week. It will be overseen by Samaritan House. Samaritan House is the core service agency in central San Mateo County, based out of San Mateo and serving many of the cities on the Bayside Central County. They're a longstanding, very well-run organization. They operate the shelter up in South San Francisco, a large homeless shelter for many, many years, and have operated that successfully. And they've been operating several of the Project Room Key hotel programs over the last several months. So they've got experience. They've got the background and the knowledge to do this, and they're a large enough organization to be able to scale very quickly to support the coast side. We've already met with them, and they're really, really excited to be able to work with us here on the coast side and make this a successful program. This does not guarantee that they will be the operator of the long-term program. They understand that they will have to compete like other agencies in an RFP process sometime next year. But to get this pilot moving quickly, they were the most ready to take this up in this situation. They are working with many of our local service providers to develop an operations plan for the pilot program. We had a large meeting last Friday that included all of our local service providers, and there was lots of important feedback provided and input given. And I understand those meetings will continue to make sure that our local service providers are involved in operating this facility. They're not sure exactly the size of the pilot yet, but likely will be no more than the 10 to 15 range. They plan to start out very small, three or four people. These would likely be individuals that are currently in county hotel room key programs. They would for sure be individuals who had been living on the coast side, and they've defined the coast side for the purposes of this project between Montero and Half Moon Bay. And they would be people that are really vulnerable to complications if they were to contract COVID, and that's typically based on their age and/or medical conditions. And so, you know, these would be individuals that would not be a high risk, would be easy to work with and develop programs around, and again, be able to start those operations. would be easy to work with and develop programs around and again, be able to start those operations and understand how the dynamics of the coast side will come into play. There will be 24/7 staffing by Samaritan House and case management, 24/7 security from day one and three square meals a day. And all the services that individuals would need onsite, healthcare, case management, laundry services, all those types of things that would help people stay safe and healthy in this facility. As I mentioned, this is an ongoing process. Our providers are involved, we're involved. I know that the sheriff's office has been in communications and will be providing advice as well. And we are looking forward to making the pilot successful, which should help us inform the long-term plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll keep you apprised as this continues forward.
Thanks, Matthew. Our first public speaker is Terry Dufour. Terry, you have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Well, first of all, congratulations to Robert. We are thrilled that you are our incoming mayor. And I think you'll bring a thoughtfulness and an inclusivity to the job that will be welcomed by the community. I also just want to say that I am, sometimes I think the most concerned voices are the voices you hear the loudest. I am so pleased that we have been able to benefit from the county purchase of the local hotel. I would have been fine with the second hotel being purchased at the end of my street, at the end of Roosevelt as well. Having worked with the at-risk community in Half Moon Bay, I am thrilled to know that there is a place for a lot of those people to go. And I want you to know that there are a lot of people in the community that may not be out actively talking about it, but that are quietly supporting what you're doing and are looking forward to being part of a solution for these people. So congratulations, Robert, and thanks for your service, Adam, and looking forward to this next couple of years.
Thank you, Terry, for your comments. Greatly appreciated.
Next, we have Elena. Elena, you have three minutes.
Hi. I wanted to talk about this hotel couple of words. So it's was been only weeks since county approved purchase of Coastside Inn as a homeless shelter and already we learn eight people, most of them moms with kids been fired, laid off from their job and they lost their job. So, and actually it's a suffer for this, this woman. And I, I just wonder if any plan as a community, as a city, to help these people? Because actually we've been victim of this project and potentially can become homeless people. So maybe because it's pilot program and hotel is big, maybe offer this woman shelter? Maybe we need a room, maybe we need a food for women for these kids. It's, this is what's my concern about what's going on. And it's nice to help homeless people. And my understanding you're going to bring somebody already in hotel rooms and boarding game. But what about local, local people who are need help during this time? And you know, we have big now COVID surge. And this is people, families don't have now money to pay for rent and no place to live. What about to think about them and to use this hotel as community center for hope for people for needs? Not just for homeless, because we have a lot of needs, local.
Thank you, Elena. Appreciate that.
Next, we have Rick Walcheck. Rick, go ahead.
Good evening. Congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. Congratulations to Joaquin. I just want to make a few comments. Very importantly, acknowledging Adam's service. I had the benefit of working with Adam when I was on the council. And just to see his leadership and taking charge and getting things done, especially in such a crazy year. I think it's very admirable and I want to make sure I acknowledge that publicly. But I really want to speak about my friend Joaquin and I want to congratulate him. I met my Joaquin during a crisis. And he's been a leader in the community well before he was recognized as a leader in the community. Soft spoken voice that when he raised his views, we all listened. As a founding member of the Latino Council, he brought wisdom and ideas and energy to get things done. And so I hope he, and I know he will bring the same sort of enthusiasm to get things done on the council. My advice that you did not ask for is, is a charge hard, put your foot on the gas and don't let up because it goes fast. And I know you have things you want to accomplish. You have great ideas. And I really wish you well and I'm excited to see what's next for you. So congratulations.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
And next we have Mary Bernier. Mary? Mary, are you there? You're muted at the moment.
Unmute. I'm sorry.
There you go. We can hear you now.
Thank you. Adam, you've been so upbeat. It's been a joy to watch you. I'm new to Half Moon Bay, so this is an entirely new experience than what I've had before with council meetings. And it was just really fun. You're refreshing and honest. I'm sorry that you happened to end up being in the same district that we had to choose between you and Joaquin. I kept asking people, is this true? And then people said, yep, that was. So you've been very, very inspiring and fun to watch you with your funny jokes and just that upbeat attitude. Mayor Brownstone, you brought up a very interesting point about COVID and that the Latinos are receiving that COVID disease five to 10 times harder than other people. It would, I want to thank Matthew and also, you know, it's, he's just been tremendous in helping make the testing more available for people. There was, I mean, I don't know if it was Trump or what, but the testing that's happening all across the country is nine in the morning until three in the afternoon. So what kind of essential workers can get to that? So, you know, Trump then didn't have too many positive, high positive numbers because the people couldn't get to be tested. So Matthew helped get rid of that company, actually find a new company and he was able to do it from four to seven. Now, because of the change in time, we were kicked back till six. But it would be fantastic if we could do it later, even till nine. Since June, I've been passing flyers out and, you know, I mean, there's a whole lot of people I've met that just can't make it. And, and it just seems like if you're familiar with the problem, then we ought to make our testing easier for people to get to. So I have another thing, but I'm just going to let that go so that I can look at my little clock. Son of a gun, it went away, but I've tried to do a timer. It would just be fantastic. You know, we, it just, it's a terrible crime and we could be kind of somebody that other cities could then see, well, wow, if they could do it in Half Moon Bay, why don't we do it? Because cities all across the county are still using that same company that's doing it 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Thanks a million. And Joaquin, que bueno. Thanks, Adam, though. Thank you. Bye.
And next we have Karina Lebovitz. Karina, go ahead. Aisha, actually.
All right. I didn't really mean to raise my hand if I did. But anyway, since I'm here, I have my daughter right next to me. She may have raised my hand for me. Want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to Mayor Eisen for his service. Have really appreciated getting to know you and attending city council lately. And congratulations to Joaquin on this election. Being a District Three resident, I know that, you know, Joaquin will accomplish a lot and have faith in kind of the future and the vision. And sorry that we had to choose as well between two great candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Aisha.
Okay, Karina Lebovitz, let's try this now. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to keep this very short. I just wanted to thank Mayor Eisen for his service. I think he's led us through a very challenging year. I'd like to say that I'm incredibly excited, Joaquin, that you are on our council too, to lead us forward into the next chapter. Congratulations to Mayor Brownstone, Vice Mayor. And I also wanted to thank you guys very much for the update on I really appreciate all the thought that's gone into this so far. The pilot program, to my mind, sounds like a fantastic testing ground. And I love the comprehensive thought around the delivery of service. And I, and I also really appreciate that we're really seeing the follow-through on prioritizing folks from the coast side. So thank you.
Thank you, Karina.
And Kristal Engate?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you from the chamber and from myself to Mayor Adam. As somebody who came to the community two years ago, being in the chamber position, how easy or hard my job is can be very dependent on how easy or hard the council is to work with. And I have gotten so extremely lucky that this council is just so open to ideas and talking things through and working towards common solutions. And I just really appreciate all the wonderful work that we've been able to do in this last year, Adam. Thank you for all of your hard work and I'm very excited for the future as well with Joaquin and having Harvey back. And it was an excellent council already. It will continue to be an excellent council and, and just the chamber really appreciates you all. And thank you so very much.
Thank you, Kristal. And I will just take that moment to comment that I think the chamber has been a fantastic bridge through this tough time between the council and the business community. And you have been a pleasure to work with and will continue to be a pleasure. So thank you.
That concludes public comments, Mayor.
Okay. Well, what's left on the rest of our public session tonight is, believe it or not, another consent calendar. It's an unusual evening, so we have two consent calendars. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I make the motion that we approve the consent calendar. Items 2A, warrants for the month of November 2020. Item 2B, comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. The 2C, 2021 calendar of city council meetings. 2D, award of construction. Am I still on the consent agenda?
Yeah, you are.
Okay. Award of construction contract and professional services agreement to the Pelican Point generator replacement project. And that's it.
Back.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Well, that concludes our reorganization session. I want to thank everyone from the public and from staff who's joined us. Thank everyone for, it's been a tough year, but it's been a great year working together and having the support of the community and everyone else we work with. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is
January 19th.
January 19th, 19th, right?
Yes.
Yes. Not till January 19th. So we all have a while to take a breather. I realize a lot of people aren't going to be traveling for the holidays. And I couldn't help but think, I know that's rough on a lot of folks. They won't be able to get together in person and their family. But, you know, for those of us who live here, can you think of a better place to get stuck for the holidays than Half Moon Bay? So I'm looking forward to that. And I'm going to wish everyone who's been part of our public meeting here, happy, warm holidays. Please take care of yourselves, be safe and have a wonderful Happy New Year. And Adam, I hope we can have that New Year celebration sometime in the next couple of years, first, first night. So
Great idea.
Nice vision. And the rest of us now will continue, should we take a five-minute break and then come on to our closed session?
I would appreciate a break.
Yeah, so let's just take a five-minute break and we'll be back here at about 8:55 then.
And remember to go to the open session portion of the closed session first and then the closed session.
So you'll have, I'll close this meeting out. You'll have new panelist invite links in your email now for the eight o'clock session.
I hope I can find the open and the closed.
The closed will be in your calendar. The open will be in your email.
The closed session portion I sent into your calendar and I just made it until 10 o'clock.
Okay.
If needed.
All right.
All right. See you soon.
All right.
Bye.